Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, and this is the meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, we're gonna go right to executive session. Go to executive session under General Law 30A, subsection 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Town Administrator, if an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, as the Chair so declares, and the Board will return to public session. Gentlemen, roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Board will adjourn to executive session to return to public session. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to go back to an open session?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next under appointments, we have a poll hearing. We have to open this up to public, we have to open a public hearing. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to open up this poll hearing? Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, we have no representatives from Verizon or EverSource and no people here for public comment, so I'd like to recess, subject to the appearance of Verizon or EverSource representatives.
So moved, motion to recess, public hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Next, under new business. Gentlemen, as you know, ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn to public executive session to talk about the contract for our town administrator, James Kelly, and happy to say that we've come to an agreement with Mr. Kelly to become our new town administrator. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the town administrator contract as amended in executive session?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Kelly, welcome aboard.
Again.
Again.
Should I go to town administrator report then, Mr. Chairman?
We can move to that, please.
All right. First thing, congratulations on everybody surviving and getting through town meeting. We have a balanced budget, but we're looking at this year's budget, not next year's. And as such, I've frozen all expense expenditures, except utilities and that type at this point. I've also frozen overtime unless it's an emergency. I've talked to Public Safety about their overtime, and we're going to look. We've got a projected deficit in the Police Department of $100,000 to $135,000, and the Fire Department from $45,000 to $60,000 projection. We're going to have to see if we can freeze most expenses and take transfers at the end of the year to pay for this so we don't go out of balance for this year's budget. Myself, the Treasury Collector, and the Finance Department are reviewing the deficits. We're reviewing the end-of-the-year transfers. We're reviewing the actual town revenues versus the projected revenues that you use to do this year's budget, and we're seeing for the end-of-the-year solutions to balance the budget.
Mr. Kelly, just to get back to these overtime amounts, this is above what was?
This is above what was appropriated for overtime.
From the fiscal year '22 budget line items.
Yes.
Okay.
This is above.
Pretty high.
Above. All right. That's why I just wanted to clarify.
In a discussion with the Fire Chief, the vast majority of this, I will have a discussion with the Police Chief, but the vast majority of this is not call firefighters.
Okay.
It's the full-time firefighter, medical personnel. They get first call or first shot at the overtime, and it's by and large from those folks that we are getting this deficit.
Okay.
But I believe, I believe that's a contractual issue, so that's something that, you know, we heard, we, I won't talk too much about it, but the town meeting, contractual obligations, so I think we have to fulfill those obligations.
We do.
So that we're not, you know?
But we have to look at this, and we, it's something the Board might want to look at for the future, and the fact of, this is, according to the department heads, not an unusual situation. So if you're paying time and a half to the amount of $100 to $135, or time and a half at $45 to $60, maybe you need an additional person. Maybe you don't. Maybe you need additional, you need a different patrol structure. That's all something that this Board would have to consider.
Okay. Police is tricky, because we have a couple of folks that are in military. The Chief just came in and explained that. They're going on military leave. We have two officers that are going to state barracks, so it's, it's...
That could make it worse next year, because this was before they left.
Yeah, well, it's gonna get worse, because I think they'll even soon, right? This month they left, too.
May.
So that's gonna make it worse, the condition's worse.
Right. And this is a projection, it's not actual.
Okay.
And it took that into account, but next year, you've gotta look at it, too. One of the issues I wanted to talk to the Chief about is, are there any retirees that are under the age of 65 that would want to come back? Because under the Governor's, the new Governor's Omnibus Municipal Bill, they can come back and work so many months at their old rate of pay.
Okay.
Explore all options.
Budget busters. I'm looking to go out for RFPs or RFQs for audit services, legal counsel, health insurance, IOD, which is engine in line of duty, and the PNC, which is personal...
Property.
Property and casualty. There, you might as well see what the marketplace is. You haven't been out in years in some of them. Admittedly, IOD, there's only two carriers that will write the insurance right now in state that people use. The rest, by the way, legal counsel, you're about $70,000 in the hole with the deficit. But that doesn't include the land court money. So land court's $17,000, so that would decrease it somewhat. I'm confident we can pull some rabbits. I don't know if we can pull a whole covey of rabbits. Is it covey? I'm sure. Out of our hats on this. Fall town meeting articles, if you have a fall town meeting. The bond houses want us to get rid of the unissued balances of past borrowing. As you can see, it's about $245,000, $246,000. The vast majority is the 2010 police station. We'll do that to clear them off the books so we keep our bond rating of AA+. Also, any borrowing for what you're going to deal with later on the school band, converting it to a bond if you want to, or some other way of paying off the band, you'd have to decide in the fall. And then you might want a sewer band to pay for some engineering costs. The CWMP is in the, you've already done that. So if you want to look at anything as far as the actual engineering, so you can apply for the SRF, which is the state program to borrow for sewer. It's, right now, it's 0% with 6.6 principal forgiveness. On an estimate of $14 million, you'd get about $1 million off the price. But that's just things to consider over the next couple of months. I've got a Wayland bylaw on the disposition of town-owned, no longer needed land that I'm gonna give out to the Board and determine, you could determine eligible properties under it, have the bylaw passed in the fall and start the process. This is for those squibs of land that are, some of them might be as big as your desk table top, or, you know, 15 by 10. But, and it gives away, so you don't have to go through the involved auction process, and it gives an opportunity for some folks that might want to square off their lot or something like that to acquire the property.
Okay.
Several years back, several, several years back, I looked into that. I had a list of town-owned properties. Mr. Kelly sent little postage stamps that are budding, and I've had several budding property owners of town-owned land that were interested in doing it. We just never got around to getting, you know, our hands deep into it. So Mr. Kelly's talked about it, so, you know, something that I've, I know, I've talked to a lot of different residences. What are you gonna do with this, you know, 100 square feet?
Right.
10 by 10, as Mr. Kelly's saying, you know, 20 by 10, what, a couple hundred square feet? I'm like, it's gotta be disposed of by the town, but it's a process, and we just never got around to it.
And we're also doing an inventory of town-owned land and tax taken land that are big parcels, so to look at it so the Board can start looking at some planning if you want to use it for conservation, if you want to use, if it's something that abuts a park and you want to use it for park property, that type of thing. It puts it all together in a package, and you can start looking at all of the town-owned land, what you dispose of and then what you keep for planning purposes in the future. Because you also might want to use it just for preservation of watershed.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
And then you've got the zoning articles that are coming. You're gonna have to do something about the solar moratorium when it expires and what you're going to do, whether it's done through regulations or it's actually done by changing the solar bylaw. And you've got the Acushnet company Miller property rezoning that is, we're still on the very preliminary stages of. But it looks like Mr. Miller might be taking care of some of the contaminated property by having the Buzzet's Bay group acquire it off him.
Okay.
And then it would be a question of town use of, through Buzzet's Bay, but the liability for the contaminated contamination would be on Buzzet's Bay, not on the town.
All right. But as you said, that's very early stages.
Yep. And then you've got, then you've got the community preservation capital items that weren't taken up in the last meeting because of the CPC not meeting.
And I'd just like to add, you know, we touched upon the old library, you know, where that goes. I don't know, but I'd like to, you know, see if you can go in a direction this meeting, because we talked about it for a lot for this past meeting, and it never got off the ground.
It would be part of our package of town-owned properties that we look to, whether, what we want to do as a Board to do with this.
And we'd have to investigate. It might be town-owned, but if you dispose of it in any way, that money might be restricted to go back to the library.
I believe it would.
Okay.
The Library Trust.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
Yeah. You know, to get it back, collecting taxes and back on the tax dollars again would be important.
Yep. The Assistant Accountant pushed through the FEMA fund reimbursement for the COVID testing. It'll be coming, the approval was there. It's coming into the town, $557,600. It's for the money that you, the town was put on the hook for, for the, all the COVID testing. So that, all that paperwork's been done, and that's coming back. You've got your approval. Nick did a great job doing that. And our consultant, Nick, made sure the April 30th ARPA project and expenditure report was filed on time. So we're copacetic with the ARPA people, and now in future meetings, we can start to discuss how you want to spend that money.
What's CSC?
That's our consultant.
That's the consultant that we, okay.
And we've got telephone access, IT access in the Selectmen offices have been put in. We're waiting for the equipment in the supply line chain to be delivered. And then the offices will have phones and docking stations if you want them for your personal computers or your laptops, if you, the town laptop, if you want one issued.
Okay.
Infrastructure projects, the Legislative earmark, the House for the master plan update, which is a grant gateway. The House approved $25,000. Senate, we're waiting on. The Senate did put out its, actually, in the last two days, put out its cherry sheet estimates. It kept the school the same as the town. It increased the town unrestricted local aid. So from the Governor's figure, Chapter 70 was increased $35,760 by the House, and the unrestricted local aid was increased $44,993. It's about $80,000 grand over the Governor's. And that'll go to Conference Committee. Hopefully, since one did one and one did the other, I think there might be a plan there for both of them to look good by adding money to the Governor's amount, and that will adhere to the, our state aid. Do you know about the Hamlin Street Bridge Grant? We're waiting for plans from the Commonwealth and their schedule of work, DOT Swale Bridge Program.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
While we're on the subject of infrastructure, I'd ask that Mr. Kelly and Mr. Gasper, because you're our guy on dealing with utilities, take a look at Anthony Street, which is First Street.
I know exactly where it is.
Take a ride down there. I was there over the weekend. I guess it was a water main break or a gas main break over the winter. It is in really bad shape. So if you guys could hold that, hold whoever accountable for that.
I'm all over it already.
Guys, the owner.
I also have just got through my boxes in my basement and got the paperwork that we used in Milbury for the fee structure and the opening of streets that was charged to the utilities and how they had to repair it afterwards.
Correct.
The specs. And I'm gonna give it to, I just got it last night, going through my third box of stuff I took out of Milbury, and I'll be giving that to Mr. Gasper to look at. And we will then probably present a, because it's a Board that has to do, pass the regulations.
Okay.
And the fee structure.
Okay.
And the surety. So that'll...
We'll get it done.
Yep.
Yep. I've met with the folks at the New Bedford Infrastructure, Jamie Poit and Justin, I believe his name was. They want to collaborate with us. They want us involved in their planning. They want us to involve them in our planning, because they are doing some expansion to their system, and they want to make sure it's all coordinated. They also are as much concerned about South Coast Rail and the impact it's gonna have as we are on some of the streets. And their projects of updating their lines and our projects of updating our lines and repaving of our streets versus access and detours with South Coast Rail. So we've opened up the conversation with them. On Lake Street, I met with the DPW. We met with the New Bedford people on that. The MOUs are all stuck in the city solicitor office, brand-new city solicitor. So it's how it gets up to the queue. They said it's not at the top of their list.
That's disappointing.
Yeah. The Safety Committee was scheduled to meet this morning, but instead, I met with DPW. We reviewed some proposed curb cuts for the parking lots to do in and out driveways. And we looked at the sidewalk guard rail to make, and I, I'm gonna meet again with Dan to make sure all of that's ADA compliant, so we don't install something and then have to rip it out.
Is this, is the curb cuts, I wrote, what parking lots? Are we still talking about Lake Street?
Yeah, Street.
Okay. That's fine.
That parking lot up there?
Yeah, no, it's fine. I know that we were waiting on some of the sidewalk stuff, depending on what we were gonna be able to do with the pawns and stuff like that.
But it's also the, we looked at the rail, and he's gonna make sure it's ADA compliant, because we don't want to install it and have to rip it out.
Sure.
One complaint, you have to rip it out. South Main Street tip. I talked to you about the coordination with the SRF folks, and Weston and Sampson is going to be talking to them, so that should work out. And later on in the meeting, we've scheduled our new senior clerk to come in. And that's my report. Any questions or concerns or something other than the street you want me to look at?
When is the new hire coming in, the new senior clerk?
She's coming in tonight to meet you folks. If you approve it, then we're hoping to start her immediately.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Waiting patiently. She had her doctor's appointment with her mom, so just waiting to see how she's making up.
Yep, very good. Okay, so on the new business, number two. Move on to that. Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic District called SERPAD. I'm gonna point a couple of representatives. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to appoint James Kelly, Town Administrator, and Douglas Pimental, Town Planner, to the SERPAD Commission representing the town of Acushnet?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. And you got another title.
Piling on. Piling on.
We're not done yet. That's correct, because, gentlemen, we also are going to appoint Mr. Kelly, Town Administrator, to the SMMPO, which is the Southeastern Mass, what is that? That is the Southeastern, what is the?
Southeastern Massachusetts Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the JTPG, which is the Joint Transportation Planning Group. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to appoint James Kelly, Town Administrator, to the JTPG designate and the SMMPO?
So moved. Second, I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask? I just looked at some of the small print there. Mr. Pimental be named alternate.
Alternate? So moved?
Second.
Yep.
All in favor, right?
All in, aye.
Good.
Dr. Pimental, Town Planner, will be notified of these appointments.
Excellent. Thank you. Number three. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. You need to be sworn in by the Town Clerk for this appointment, or no?
Town Administrator.
Okay, that's fine. Just want to make sure.
All right. Next on the new business.
At the, at the town meeting.
The sworn out, not sworn in.
Okay. On the new business, number three. Approval of renewal bond, anticipation notes. Mr. Kelly, expand on this.
Mr. Chairman, you've got the school roof project.
Correct.
You've already borrowed a band, which is an anticipatory note in the past. You've received $83,727 from the Mass School Building Assistance Authority. The project's not completed. You can't bond this project until it's completed or pay for it in another way. While the MSBA issues are pending, so you redo the anticipatory note. You go out again for the $2487,032, and that is good for a year. The project should be completed by that point. You should get approximately half of the money back from the MSBA that will then come into the town, and then the town can determine whether they want to bond the completed project and go out into the bond market or whether you want to pay for it in another manner.
Very good, because they're planning on doing that work in the summertime, right? When the food is not there.
When the schools, when the schools are there. They delayed because of the cost of materials and how, and building products went up so much, they delayed to put it out to bid. Because they knew it was gonna impact and inflate that cost.
And we also discussed with the superintendent, and we're gonna take care of how we do the antenna so it doesn't negatively impact in the DPW and their billing process or the communication with the school. So it's good we're, because they use the antenna, too, for their walkie-talkies. So it's good we're doing it over the summer.
Hey. This is what we had discussed prior, for borrowing for opposition. It's like 52% MSBA reimbursement. The other 48%, it's like 1.2, 1.25 from the town side. And this is where we had the discussion, was he that was here that we were gonna borrow on 15 years? At the 3%, it would put us right around $83,000 a year, and we were gonna pay for that out of the solar revenue fund.
Correct.
So it wasn't a debt exclusion on, a borrowing, technically a debt exclusion on our taxpayers, right?
Right.
We can do this free and clear. Kudos to us. Kudos to us.
Yeah.
Hopefully it all works out that way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I believe you need a nice long motion, right, Mr. Chairman?
The clerk of the board needs to read verbatim what the bond has said.
So I, the clerk of the board of selectmen of the town of Acushnet, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board held May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, of which meaning all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of two million four hundred and eighty-seven dol, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand thirty-two dollars at three percent general obligation bond anticipation notes. The notes of the town dated May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and payable May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at power accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and a final official statement dated May third, two thousand twenty-two. Each in some form, as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaken in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with the relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one of the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all of the matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and are hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in and out, in on or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine point oh three two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting. That no deliberations or discussions, decisions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A subsection eighteen through twenty-five as amended.
Very good, Mr. Gasper. So gentlemen, do I have a motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good.
There are documents the board must sign before they leave the building tonight. But other than that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, on the new business, we're going right to number five. Appointment of election members, change in appointment schedule. Received a letter from Pamela Labonte, our town clerk. And she is asking that we change, have the board move the terms of appointments to begin July first and end June thirtieth of each year. In addition, I want to recommend to the board of selectmen to move all appointments to coordinate with the fiscal year rather than May first. So she's looking for some time in between what we normally do, I guess the appointments are on May first, but she's asking us to push them to fiscal years now. You know, give her some time to catch up with the dog licenses, catch up with time meeting, catch up with the local elections, which fall in between May first and fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So just the first thing on the list to do is I need to read the names of the election staff appointments because we have the election coming up, so she needs to have those approved before.
And appointed.
And appointed before Saturday. So.
Before you begin to read the list, the only question that I have is I see some of these might not be Acushnet residents in, is that okay? I don't know if it's true or not. It says Dartmouth, Mass, Manapoiset, New Bedford, and Manapoiset, there's four of them I have on the list.
I, in other towns, we've used, especially we've used assistant clerks from other towns to assist.
That's fine, I just, I wanna make sure that they don't meet, it doesn't require to be a town resident, that's.
Okay. And do I have to read the addresses, or can I just read the names? Just the names, okay. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to appoint Louise Benoit?
As election officer?
As election staff, as election staff. So I have a motion to appoint as election staff Louise Benoit, Linda Blaise, Christine Brown, Allison Brunette, Alana Lee Carrario, Andrea Corey, Diana Kudo, Rosemarie Dupont, Margaret Fernandez, Diane Ferrara, Carolyn Fortin, Riley Fortin, Carol Gravanas, Paulette Hudson, Beth Kalanovich, Lexie Labonte, Donna LaBrod, Elizabeth Lever, Mary LeBeau, June Limrise, Ashley Leonard, Pauline Lincoln, Maria Moore, Margaret Motta, Francis Modle, Susan Perry, Everett Filla Junior, Fay Filla, Priscilla Santos, Barbara Sullivan, Michelle Texera, Arlene Todd, and Joseph Costa.
So moved, motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. So gentlemen, I guess we need to make a motion to change the dates as requested by Pamela Labonte for the terms to run fiscal year, which is July first, two thousand twenty-two, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved, second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all appointments, all appointments that we may move to fiscal year, which would be July first, to June of the following year. Because that's what she's asking, that all appointments also be moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The appointments that are presently. The appointments that are presently pending. When is their termination date?
Normally they would be May first.
So.
We're checking on some of those, um.
So we will have to check on whether there is a holdover status for anything that has expired on May first, for you to then do it.
Okay.
Until you let them stay in holdover status and you appoint them as of July one because you've got a period from May one to July one now to worry about.
Right, that's two months, correct.
And the only ones that I know that we don't normally appoint during normal appointments is FinCon members that's done after town meeting. I think that statute's in our bylaws.
And does this include staff?
Well, that's a question to be answered because she says all, she's asking for all appointments.
Is it just the ones for her though, like the registrars and the inspectors?
Well, that's not, that's why I'm questioning, because the way you made that motion, it could be inferred that it's all staff and all appointments.
Well, that's what she mentions. In addition, I want to recommend to the board of selectmen to move all appointments to coordinate with fiscal year.
Take that as for election numbers.
Well, the first paragraph is discussed due to change.
I think this might, that part might have to be held over until the next meeting.
Okay.
Because there definitely is some issue.
Why don't we just find out from Miss Labonte whether she's actually requesting, is it just the ones that she, that the appointments that are under her, in other words, the registrars, the election offices and things of the like? So she has all those people in place and then she can go through again? And not like, you know, all our committees, you know, and commissions and boards and things of the like?
Well, I think she's actually, she is asking for, not the employees per se, but certain board, yeah, certain boards and committees to be moved to that specific, so like safety committee, so then they would be on that particular timeframe. I mean, we'll have to, I mean, we certainly can ask.
I understand that, but if you have people that have already, their appointment has already expired because it's May one, and there's no provision for a holdover status, are you appointing them as of July one? Or I'm just saying, this is something that has to be looked into.
Okay.
So it's basically only this year that you have to worry about that holdover status? After you do the J one to June thirtieth, it's just, it's continuous from there? I guess it's might be for, so people aren't running into our office, they're gonna be sworn in and things like that? Picking up someone for a time or whatever, so just find out, it's no big deal.
Okay.
We can bring it back to the next meeting.
I'll withdraw the second motion. Very good. Okay. Okay, so number six.
We had it scheduled for, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, this is Mickey Higgins from.
Right.
So.
Higgins, how are you this evening?
Excellent.
We had.
I received it from Verizon.
We had a poll here and scheduled for his property with Verizon or EverSource, and I just asked, was gonna ask him if he had a contact, I tried calling, but no more on the contact.
I tried calling them on three different cell phones and three different things. So I don't know if we can try to maybe put it to a date certain so that we don't have to put this, if you guys can maybe.
Yeah, it's in recess, right, and you can just carry it over? So can I ask a, may I ask a question?
Uh huh.
Yes, please. What? Stand?
Sure.
Sure.
Some idea?
Come out of recess, you can go back into recess after he asks his question.
Okay, do I have a motion to come out of recess concerning the poll?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Very good, Flores, yes, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, so for the record, my name is Mickey Higgins, I'm the owner of the property at one fifty-eight Main Street. We're building a new service station. We've been at this for over a year and trying to get a utility pole and trying to get an electric service with EverSource, and then I think we learned probably about two months ago that EverSource isn't the one that actually sets the pole, but Verizon sets the pole. And that was a whole different work order number and a whole different group of phone calls, phone numbers to call. So here we are, I guess my question to the board is, do they need to be here tonight? Are they, is that how it's typically done? I know what they're looking for, I can explain what they're looking for. But what, how, how does Verizon normally do things? We just need somebody to answer questions, Mr. Gasper had a question, so there's no, you can, I think if Higgins can answer the question?
So one of their poles, it seems like all the poles run on the west side of the road. You are on the east side of the road. It looks like they placed in one on the east side of the road. I believe there was either a solid pole or was a temporary pole, which the electrical box from Tony Service Station that was put near that tree in the corner, the back corner. It looks like the pole's going on the sidewalk.
That's correct. So what they're looking, what they're looking for, permission from this board, is to put a mid-span pole on the sidewalk in line with all the other utility poles. Then they would come off that mid-span pole and go overhead across the street to a pole that's on my property.
So is, the map don't show that they gave us, the map don't show poles on your side of the road. It shows only one which would come off your building, the wires, come to this pole and then jump across the street and then run with all the other poles. The one that's on your side of the street is the one of concern because it doesn't seem like there's any other poles. And I don't think you could take a pole and just stick it in the sidewalk and then ADA compliance for sidewalks would be interfered with and.
On my, on our side of the road, the poles on our property, it's not, not in the sidewalk.
Oh, that's all I need to know. It shows it on the sidewalk, it doesn't show it in your property, so if it's on, if it's on your, in your property, that's awesome.
In our landscaped area.
That's awesome, that's, that's.
So the only pole that they really need your permission for is the one that's in line with all the other utility poles.
That's correct, make a motion to approve.
Wait, wait, that's not how they.
There's two, there's two poles.
Yeah.
Two new poles.
That's fine.
But the other one's on the other side in line with all the other ones, and that's gonna carry the weight of the lines coming across from the pole that's on his property, jump across the street, and then it's gonna tie into the other lines and go down the other poles.
Yeah, but I meant the motion has to be to approve the two new pole location.
But we gotta do that when we come out of public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak. When you come to thinking that the last time we had one of these, what's drawn on the map doesn't seem to coincide and represent what actually is taking place. Because I remember it was, it was off, you had the same question, it was off on the map, but in, you know, practical application.
So you're saying the new pole will be on your property and not on the sidewalk?
There's two poles.
Right, according to this map, there's one on the opposite side of the street. And then there's one.
Show them the map.
Yeah, yeah.
What is?
That's me. Yeah, this one's in, yeah, that's correct. But this, this one, whether it's shown correctly or not, because they came out and they said a state where the pole is, is on our property, not on the town's property. The one that goes on the side of the street as the service station, as the convenience store, is on my property, not your property.
Right, but you see how it's drawn?
Yes.
It looks like it's on, it looks like it's in the sidewalk.
I will tell you what's really interesting, because I've been building gas stations for a long time, you know, anyway. But when you deal with Verizon now, you don't talk to any Verizon employees, everybody's a subcontractor, they subcontract. Even the people that answer the telephone, everything's subbed out.
Because our only concern is, like you mentioned, the ADA, if there's a pole right in the middle of the three-foot sidewalk now, someone, you know, disabled trying to get around it in a wheelchair, you know, I mean, as long as it's.
They came out, they said a state where the pole's going.
And it's in your property. The other thing I add was a visibility thing for the driveway that's behind you, so it's not a sightline issue. When they're coming out of their driveway, they don't wanna be, you don't wanna be, although I know some areas where you're staring at a stupid telephone pole and trying to get out.
Because we have a good planner from EverSource, and the gentleman from EverSource is the gentleman that comes out, tells them where the pole goes. It's just Verizon is the one that has to set the pole, because they own the pole. So the gentleman from EverSource, who's actually been very helpful, he's, he located the pole. It's clearly on my property, in my landscaped area, on the side of our building, it's not your property.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification.
So gentlemen, I guess we've had our, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing aspect of this poll hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve poll placement as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.
Thank you, Mickey.
Okay?
Now we'll get this paperwork over to the town clerk first thing in the morning.
We'll chase you down.
Yes.
May I ask a question, Mr. Higgins? Because I'm asked this question. You have some anticipated date of opening, or is it still a couple of months out?
We were striving for Memorial Day, and we knew that would be tight, so we said, well, that would be tight, but we'll definitely make it for June first. But this utility pole has really kind of killed us.
Okay, so Fourth of July. No, I'm only, I'm not far away from that.
I hope so, I hope so. And if we could, if we had power, we could finish that thing up. No, I, I hope so. I hope so. And we could, if we had power, we could finish that thing up really quick. I mean, we're spread low out there. But we've been reluctant to spread low because, you know, without having irrigation going, you're just going to grab.
Well, I've heard many good comments about the improvement to that corner.
Well, thank you. It sounds like my neighbors like me now too. So it's all good. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. All right, great. Be able to follow that. You're a timely man. Um, okay, next on the new business. Let me just get my book back out. We have a reserve fund transfer in the amount of forty one thousand seven hundred dollars for the fire EMS. Mister Kelly, could you just expand on that a little bit?
This is to repair the two rescues. One has been repaired.
Uh huh.
And it's, the other one, the engine and the exhaust system are, have to be repaired. The first one was just a turbo.
Okay. So the, on the ambulances, you're talking about?
Yeah, the rescue.
Okay.
And so we have one back in service now. We have the other one that's going to take a while. And forty one thousand seven hundred. It's probably, we probably should do an inventory audit on all our vehicles in the next year to make sure we don't get into any of these problems.
Okay.
Uh, there is, all the records are going to be kept and there is a possibility on these vehicles that there might be a recall issued. And so there might be some offsets in the expense.
Very good. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of forty one thousand seven hundred dollars for the fire EMS?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, next we have a reserve fund transfer request for seventy five hundred dollars. And that appears to be to refinish the basketball courts at Pulp Park. Gentlemen, do I have a?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Mister Kelly.
Chad and I have worked on this. Chad has talked to his suppliers. We recognize that we weren't going to be successful with getting the CPC funds. And Chad wanted to get this up and running, wanted to make sure every, all the equipment was there. We looked at some past articles that we could get some money out of. And we came up a little short. That's why we're looking for this reserve fund transfer. I want to commend him for all the work he did and making sure when he realized that the CPC would not be meaning. And he wanted to make sure this was done to be ready for the good weather. And it's a great effort on a number of town employees. And I think it shows how when, when one thing doesn't work, we can get together and make sure it works another way.
Very good. Okay. Um, well, the next on the agenda is our appointment of Erin Messier as the senior clerk for the Board of Selectmen. And she's not here. Is that going to hold up her, I mean?
She signed an acceptance. You folks have a, the resume. It's, we interviewed a number of people. She definitely is the most it seems to be the most qualified as well as most anxious to start the job right away.
Right.
And has some experience with social media. So we can have her step into that too.
Well, motion to appoint Erin Messier in court deposition in Board of Selectmen's office. And just one other point, Greg, but I understand she's a, she's a veteran. And I think that's enough. You know, the fact that we're able to bring someone who's qualified, that's also a veteran, is a great thing for this town. So congratulations to all of you who are involved in this search and screen process. Look forward to working with her.
So we have.
And if she comes in later on, you folks can meet her. But she did have a previous appointment that she could not cancel to care, take a family number.
Very good. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. One point. Should we start tomorrow?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. All right.
I wish.
I tried to do it yesterday, but something intervened.
So, selectman announcements. Selectmen here. So what are we, Old Colony reappointment discussion? Anyone want to expand on that or?
Basically, every year, there's usually, we have three appointees from the town of Cushing on the committee for Old Colony to go over the finances with Old Colony and attend their meetings. Um, every year, there's one member that's up for a reappointment. Um, so I just wanted to kind of, you know, let you guys know that this member, particular member is up. And if you guys want to let people know if they, if anybody wants to apply for it. Um, but, but the member now is willing to do it. Um, but if anybody else wants to apply, we'll take in letters of interest.
Okay.
Usually if we have, if, as long as we don't have any issues with a reappointment on somebody on a committee, we usually just reappoint along with their in good standing. And they will, and they will continue that appointment unless there was issue with that, the appointee. But I haven't heard anything. So.
But this touches upon, once again, on this letter, it says her term expired May first. So that's Evelyn Boulay.
So, uh, does, I'd have to look at the agreement, the Old Colony agreement to see if there is an appointment schedule in the Old Colony agreement.
Okay. So we can maybe put this on our next agenda? We can find those things out?
That, I think, you know, looking at attendance, right? I mean, you need to look at attendance and see if they.
Right.
If they've been attending the meetings, then that's, that's, I think, that's more important, right, is attendance in meetings because they, that's, their duty is to make sure they attend the meetings and bring that information back to the town. So.
Especially with some issues with, recently.
Yep. Can reach out.
And I will, I'm having, I have a letter actually going out to board chairpeople asking about, can we get some attendant reports? Um, so we can.
I can reach out to Aaron Polanski, the superintendent of Old Colony. I know him pretty well. I have his contact information. So I'll just check the status of, you know, the attendance.
We have to.
It's important for the school and the town to have somebody there.
Yeah, Mister Gasp, Mister Gaspard, myself have started to put together a wish list of things from Mister Polanski that we'd like to see come to the town. So.
Well, well, and then second of the selectman announcements. Um, I got a letter here in front of me from Mister Rainey Racine, chairman of the Cushing Housing Authority. And it says there is an opening due to the retirement of Isabel Souza, which was effective April twenty first, twenty twenty two. So, uh, so Miss Souza was reelected in twenty twenty for a five-year term set to expire May seventeenth, twenty twenty five, and served as the elected tenant representative. Due to her early departure, this has created a vacancy which is required to be filled according to the enclosed February eleventh, twenty twenty one Department of Housing and Community Development Public Housing Notice. So, um, I guess this is to inform people that there is an opening. So anyone who would like to apply for this particular vacancy should do so to the Housing Authority.
Or be a joint appointment between housing and Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and you mentioned, Mister Chairman, it was, it was an, an, a tenant appointment? So does it have to be somebody that's a tenant? Again, somebody, in other words, who resides in the, in the community? That'll be a question you might want to reach out to. Mister Racine about, it might need to be because you just read, I thought you just read Isabel Souza.
It does say that, yeah.
I don't have that.
Tenants submit their names to Town Clerk within thirty days, blah, 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 blah. So yeah, it's got to be somebody from. Okay, yes, correct.
It should be in the back.
Anyone interested in the tenant?
Well, it's, it's a tenant or a household member or anybody participating in a rental assistant program administered by the L H A in the town.
Public Housing Authority. So that's it.
Mm-hmm.
So they can, either that, you can reach out to Lynn, the director, and see if they have any interest from the inside tenant?
Yep. Absolutely.
If they do, submit a name. Once they go through the process, if they have two or three that are interested, maybe they want to narrow down, whatever. Bring it to the board. We can accommodate that.
And letters of interest for vacancies on various committees and discussion could be submitted to the, or various committees, I should say, be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's office. Uh, gentlemen, any other announcements that you'd like to make? Well, I'd like to make an announcement that on Saturday, May fourteenth, we have an election coming up. So I'd like people to go out there and exercise their right to vote. And polls are open at the school, the elementary school on Middle Road from ten AM to six PM.
That is correct.
So it's supposed to be a beautiful day. We'll stop your yard work in about an hour and head on down to cast your ballot.
No snow?
No snow. I like the old days. Uh, future business, gentlemen, Selectmen's meeting, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, at four PM. That is a Wednesday.
I might have a schedule conflict on that. So if I can get back to you guys.
Anything, whatever you need.
Yep.
Let Mister Kelly know and Miss Lennon know and they can, we can rehaul that meeting, whatever. Figure it out.
Gentlemen, we're going to adjourn to executive session. Executive session under General Law Thirty A subsection twenty one A two, to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel with fire chief, new fire chief, that should be. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body as the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session. And gentlemen.
I'll do it separate motions.
Separate motion. So roll call vote. Mister Warner?
Yes.
Mister Gaspard?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
And after that executive session, there'll be a second executive session.
A second executive session under General Law Thirty A subsection twenty one A dash three to conduct strategy and preparation with negotiations with union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with union personnel, police, fire, AFSMI, and D P W. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body as the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session. Gentlemen, roll call vote. Mister Warner?
Yes.
Mister Gaspard?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Ladies and gentlemen, the board is going to adjourn to executive session, not to return to public session. Thank you very much and have a good evening.